The urgency may be fears that China could take advantage of the situation to deepen ties to the tiny island nation by offering assistance or technology. Vanuatu is officially neutral and maintains friendships with both Beijing and Washington. In his last update, the Vanuatu Prime Minister said 70% of systems have been restored. But questions remain about the impact of the month-long outage. Jenna McLaughlin, NPR News.
This afternoon on All Things Considered, the government's charges of fraud and conspiracy against Sam Bankman-Fried, the former CEO of the cryptocurrency exchange FTX, who is now under arrest. You can hear that story on your radio or your phone, or tell your smart speaker to play your local member station by name. It's Here and Now.
In 1951, the Federal Reserve and U.S. Treasury came to an agreement.
Henceforth, the Fed will be in charge of monetary policy, and the U.S. Treasury will be in charge of debt.
I'm Amy Scott. What that old agreement means for today's economy, next time on Marketplace.
Catch up on the day's business news with Marketplace, weekdays at 6:00 PM on Radio Corporate support for Radio IQ comes in part from Gentry Lock Attorneys, committed to outcomes that matter, for clients and referring professionals. Offices in Roanoke, Lynchburg, and Richmond. More information at gentrylock.com. Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and from MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and simulating software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And Staples, with supplies to get business done no matter where it gets done. From ink and toner cartridges to technology like webcams and networking accessories. More at Staples stores or staplesconnect.com. Staples.
It's Here and Now. The holiday season often means family recipes, and they don't have to be fancy. One of my favorites is a family recipe for a South Indian prawn curry. All the women in my family make it masterfully. And in fact, it's pretty close to a recipe that we received from a listener from Yuma, Arizona, Sujata Halankar. It's part of our month of sharing your family recipes. Sujata's recipe is for fish curry. Welcome, Sujata.
Hi.
So I have to tell you that my family comes from the same coastal region of India your family is from, Konkan, and my producer Kalyani is also Konkani. So between you, me, and Kalyani, we've got a lot of fish curries in our family.
Yes, and it's really nice to know that you are from the same region.
Yes, and to tell us about the women in your family and this recipe.
Yeah, so this recipe is, I call it generational recipe. My grandmother started cooking it, my mom's mother started cooking it. And it's nothing very fancy. The ingredients are very basic, locally available ingredients like coconut, garlic, green chilies, onions, and chili powder, coriander powder, and that's about it, you know? And we are from the region where we grow a lot of coconut, so.
To begin our meeting, I would like to introduce Pastor Daniel Palmer of North Roanoke Baptist Church. I would ask Pastor, come on up. Tell us a little bit about his church and his congregation. And then after he's finished with that, he'll let us know when he's ready to give the invocation. I would then ask everyone, if you so desire, you don't have to, but if you so desire, you can stand up and join us in the invocation. And please remain standing, because after that, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a delight to be here today. A little bit about our church. Again, our church is North Roanoke Baptist Church, and we are, we're people. We are people who've been rescued by Jesus to worship and proclaim His glory, and we are unapologetically committed to living that out in our daily lives. We believe the gospel is this, that God has a Son, and He sent Him to rescue us. He was crucified in our place, risen on the third day as promised, and He is now ascended at the right hand of the Father, ruling and reigning in righteousness. And we are committed to following Him. If you'd like to know more about this Jesus, we'd love to see you on Sundays at 6402 Peters Creek Road, at 9:15 for Bible study, and at 10:30 for worship. But more to what might be of interest to you is the impact we are making because we've been changed by the gospel in the Roanoke Valley. We exist to be Christ's church, which is why we worship. And we also exist to impact the Roanoke Valley. We want to make a positive difference in lives in the Roanoke Valley. We have a partnership with the League of Older Americans with their Let's Do Lunch program. We'd encourage you to come out and support them. We offer free ESL classes every Wednesday night to people who are learning English as a second language. We are the evacuation site for Burlington Elementary School and also for Roanoke County Schools if there's a more significant event for which our services and facility would be needed. We provide meals on a regular basis for the faculty and staff at Burlington Elementary Schools and Mountain View Elementary School. We provide open gyms to at-risk teens in the Roanoke Valley, and we are a meeting site for various community events and organizations, everything from the Sewing Guild to the local fire department. So it's a blessing to be able to serve here in the Roanoke Valley and to be able to pray for you today. Let's pray. Our Father and our God, I give you praise for this board and for the people gathered in this room and their various roles and responsibilities to the residents of the county of Roanoke, Virginia. God, we thank you for a beautiful place to live, just driving down the interstate, the sun and the clouds and the mountains. God, it's a beautiful place to be, to work and to live and to have the opportunity to be a blessing to others. God, I pray that every member of the board this day and for as long as they serve would see this as an opportunity, that they would see it as a stewardship. God, that you would give them wisdom in the decisions that they make, and that the decisions that they make would be unto the end of human flourishing. God, that men and women and boys and girls throughout Roanoke County would have better lives because of the decisions that are made here. And God, I thank you for the liberty that we have at North Roanoke Baptist Church to gather freely, to worship freely, to conduct our lives under the lordship of Jesus Christ without persecution or fear or interference from this governing body. God, I pray it would always be that way, that we would cherish the free exercise of religion here in Roanoke County. We thank you for the gospel in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, that is an impressive list of activities that North Roanoke Baptist is involved in. And I think you're real, you and your church are a real gem in our community. Very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, and welcome to our meeting on December 13th, 2022. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesdays at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. As you can all see, we have deviated from that schedule for our November and December meetings. Meetings are broadcast live on RV TV, Channel 3, and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday, 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisor meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokcountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or to attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk of the board at 540-772-2005, at least 48 hours into the conference. And finally, please turn off your cell phones or place them on silent. Opening ceremonies, item one, roll call. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Peters.
Here.
Mrs. Hooker.
Here.
Mr. Norworth.
Here.
Mr. Radford.
Here.
Mr. Mahoney.
Here. Item B, request to postpone, add, or to change the order of our agenda items. Are there any requests to postpone, add, or change any items on our agenda?
No.
Mr. Kaywood.
No changes.
Mr. Lubeck.
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. As a point of privilege on part of the chairman, before we go into item C, our proclamations, resolutions, recognitions, and awards, I would ask the clerk to show the video from the State of the County meeting that we had last week. I had the opportunity, and I thank Amy and Gray Craig and all the folks at RV TV, I had the opportunity to see this video several times. And I think for many board members, the first time you saw it was Wednesday morning. I just think it is a fantastic video. Madam Clerk, would you please show it? Scott, Scott Ramsburg and your staff, you guys did a great job.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, thank you. Item C, proclamations, resolutions, recognitions, and awards. C1 is a resolution recognizing Megan Cronice, Assistant Director of Planning, for her exemplary service to Roanoke County. Mr. Kaywood and Ms. Cronice.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you all know, I think this is my favorite thing to do, is to come up with a very deserving employee to recognize, and this would represent that recognition for the fourth quarter of this year. And today, I'm recommending that you recognize Megan Cronice, and I think as I got to hear at your State of the County address, transportation has really become kind of the cornerstone of many of our economic developments, and Megan is the cornerstone of that effort. And I was trying to think of what to say about Megan, because the accolades could go on for a really long time, but I thought it might go briefly back into history when I first came to the county. And as you know, I had a 20-year career at the Highway Department before coming here, but one of the first things I was told as a new employee is, well, Richard, we hired you because you were good at capital projects. We want you to work on those, but forget about all that transportation stuff. The board's really not interested in that. We're not doing anything with that, and just forget that that ever happened and work on these buildings. I thought, okay, that was fun. I'll do that. But then after a year or so, I was looking around and thought, well, we really could benefit from some more investment in transportation and engagement there. And I was looking for someone who could really carry that torch. And I liken my role in this process to Michael Jordan's high school basketball coach, because you think he did have a coach, and he's most known for not letting Michael Jordan on the team his sophomore year. So Michael Jordan went and became the star of the JV team, and then, of course, he had a very successful high school career that led to the Michael Jordan we know today. But the analogy there is very apt. I did work with Megan and tried to teach her what I knew, but just as Michael Jordan's high school basketball coach could not play basketball nearly as well as he could, I certainly can't do hardly any of the things that Megan does for us today. So she has been instrumental in many, 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 an application for funding. I think for a county our size, we have had phenomenal success. And the one thing that I think where we're really blessed is, I know as I go to meetings around the state with Megan to talk about transportation or to see folks at VDOT, that just about everybody that we see would love to have Megan be a part of their team, and we're so fortunate to have her as a part of our team. So with that, I know the clerk will read the resolution here shortly, but I just can't thank her enough for all of her efforts, and it really has been, I think, the backbone of that success we've seen in economic development.
Madam Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution recognizing Megan Cronice, Assistant Director of Planning for exemplary service to Roanoke County. Whereas in May 2006, Megan Cronice was hired by Roanoke County as a planner too, and during her tenure has been promoted to Principal Planner, Transportation Planning Manager, and Assistant Director of Planning. And whereas Megan has led and managed the Transportation Division of the Planning Department for the last four years. And whereas Megan has developed strong, effective working relationships and partnerships with local, regional, and state transportation groups and agencies. And whereas Megan has coordinated and submitted many successful transportation grant applications over the years, including $100 million of funded transportation projects in the Route 419 and Route 460 corridors, multimodal improvements along Plantation Road, Williamson Road, and West Main Street, and greenway projects such as the Glade Creek Greenway at Vineyard Park West. And whereas in 2022, Megan has coordinated and assisted in the submission of 18 grant applications totaling $98 million in transportation projects and studies, which included the successful funding of Cortrand and the McAfee-Naw Trailhead Shuttle. And whereas Megan continues to plan for transportation improvements to the county's transportation system by coordinating recommendations in the Roanoke County 200 Plan and the Route 460 land use and connectivity study. And whereas Megan keeps citizens, county departments, and the Board of Supervisors informed on a variety of transportation issues, including changes in traffic operations, traffic safety issues, funding opportunities, and current studies. And whereas Megan continues to be a strong and passionate advocate for the county's and region's transportation system and its improvement. And whereas Megan's positive attitude and commitment to her programs make a difference every day in many of Roanoke County citizens' lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County expresses its deepest appreciation and the appreciation of the citizens of Roanoke County to Megan Cronice for her dedicated service to Roanoke County, and further, the Board of Supervisors does express its best wishes for continued success in the future.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker.
Yes.
Mr. Norworth.
Yes.
Mr. Radford.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes. Do you want to say anything, or do you want to wait till the next item on your agenda?
I'll have something briefly. I would like to thank you very much for your remarks, Richard. And I want to thank our team in transportation and planning, because nothing I do, I do alone. We have a fantastic team here at the county, not only in our department, but also across the county. I have to work with a number of people across departments, some of them in the very back of the room, and I really do enjoy that. We also can't do what we do without the support of VDOT, our VDOT Salem residency staff, Brian Levinson, his folks are outstanding, as well as the Salem District of VDOT. So, and lastly, I wanted to thank Philip and Doug and Richard for, when I come to them with an idea, they rarely talk me out of it. So being able to move forward on some really new and innovative projects for the county is really exciting, and it makes it fun to come to work every day to take on something new. So I really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Any comments? Board members?
I'll go first. Well, I can understand them agreeing with you, because you really do bring fresh, innovative ideas, and so it would be hard to say no to thoughts. So you're a great strategic thinker, and you kind of think about those moves like the chess match. You think of those moves ahead of time. So when we get here, it's like, oh, we have that figured out. So Megan, great, thank you for recognizing her, and we'll see you around.
Just want to add to this, there's nobody that I'd rather go to Richmond with than you. We did what absolutely amazed me, in a span of four days, government moved so swiftly to go before a state committee and succeed in delivering our message. I'm astounded in five years on this board that we did that so quickly. It just goes to show me that we can do it, and in large part, the message is crafted by you. You make the PowerPoint saying, and you make the words that we deliver, and I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
So we treasure you. I mean, it's obvious, we all just really appreciate your ongoing work. I mean, you've been doing this kind of work for a long time now, and from the Planning Department and even before transportation, you've excelled everywhere you've been. And this is just your latest victory lap, and we're not surprised. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
I really don't know what else I can add. Ditto to all of that, but again, like Martha, I've worked with Megan for just a few years, because we're not very old. And yeah, you've always been great to work with, helped me understand a lot of things when I question it, and I think you're a huge asset to the county. So thank you.
Just one last thing, Mr. Chair. No good deed goes unpunished, so we're going to raise the bar so we can do even more. So I know we'll succeed. Thank you.
Ms. Whitaker would like to take a picture. Thank you, Megan. Next item on our agenda. Next item on our agenda is item D. D1 is a briefing, briefing to introduce Danny Poe, Assistant Director of Economic Development. Megan Baker.
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First, I would like to say, in my short time here as Director of Economic Development, I would reiterate the comments, all of Megan's work. It makes it great to be Director of Economic Development, because transportation is huge. I am also grateful to introduce our new Assistant Director of Economic Development, Danny Poe. Danny brings over 15 years of experience in community and economic development. Most recently, she managed operations and risk management strategies for the Roanoke Regional Airport Commission. Prior to that, Danny was the Economic Development Specialist for downtown Roanoke. Danny is already a great addition to our team, contributing her knowledge on the Roanoke region, which is key for me, and real estate. She's also a community leader, most notably serving as the Chair of Leadership, Roanoke Valley, and she's also involved with the Roanoke Boosters Club and Wasina Elementary PTA. I very much look forward to continuing to work with Danny to attract and retain business in Roanoke County.
Danny, what would you like to say?
Thank you. I've really enjoyed my almost three, two and a half weeks here, and I've enjoyed joining the team. Megan and Doug have been great in welcoming me, and I look forward to working with you all as we get forward.
I think I met Danny, I think it was last week. I think she had escaped from the HR indoctrination. Is that a two-day, is that a two-day event that we go through now? And I think she's been here that long, and she already has dragged me into a Leadership Roanoke Valley event tomorrow out in Vinton, so she's hitting the ground running.
That's great.
Thank you for joining us. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Yep. Next item on our agenda is item E1, New Business. E1 is a resolution requesting the Commonwealth Transportation Board to fund a smart-scale application for Interstate 81 southbound widening between Exits 137 and Exit 128, Catawba Magisterial District. Ms. Cronice.
Thank you very much. Here we go again. Interstate 81 is critical to the economic vitality of the Commonwealth with the highest per capita truck volume in the state, carrying nearly 50% of the state's value of goods. Interstate 81 also experiences the highest degree of congestion and crash density in the state, and when these factors are combined, they result in the highest proportion of incident delay compared to all other Virginia interstates. Interstate 81 is the artery connecting the Roanoke Valley to the New River Valley and to Virginia Tech. In addition to serving as a preferred route for commuters and travelers, the interstate provides a connection to flights in and out of the Roanoke-Blacksburg Regional Airport, to two Amtrak trains each day to Virginia Tech's Blacksburg campus, to the Virginia Tech-Carrillion School of Medicine, and to Radford University-Carrillion. The Smartway Bus travels Interstate 81 daily to provide service between Roanoke and Blacksburg, and the Virginia Breeze Bus Line also travels Interstate 81 daily between Washington, D.C. and Bristol, with stops at the Exit 140 Park and Ride and the Falling Branch Parking Ride in Christiansburg. The segment of Interstate southbound between Exit 137 at Wildwood Road and Exit 128 at Ironto is the only segment of the 32-mile-long interstate between Christiansburg and Troutville that is not currently funded for widening. While vitally important, this project was the first Interstate 81 corridor plan project to miss being funded through the original Interstate 81 project programming in 2020. The northbound segment between Exit 118 in Christiansburg and Exit 137 at Wildwood Road is currently in design. The crash history along the seven-mile-long southbound segment of the interstate is also significant. There have been 251 crashes since 2018, for an average of 50 crashes per year, or about one crash per week, and five deaths have occurred in four crashes since February 2020. When combined with already high traffic volumes, these frequent crashes gridlock not only Interstate 81 southbound, but also Route 11460 and any other east-west route in the region. On December 6, 2022, the Commonwealth Transportation Board voted to submit a smart-scale application for this segment of Interstate. The Commonwealth Transportation Board understands that there are great efficiencies and cost savings in designing and widening both directions of Interstate at the same time. Delaying widening of the southbound segment for several years will only cause redesign, reconstruction, additional costs, and increased driver disruption when this project is eventually programmed. Roanoke County staff have been collaborating with VDOT Salem District staff to compile smart-scale application components. If adopted, the proposed resolution of support will be submitted as part of the application in mid-December. The application would then be scored with all of the other smart-scale round five applications, and Roanoke County did submit eight with the help of the Transportation Planning Organization. The town of Vinton and Montgomery County have passed resolutions of support for this project, and the Roanoke Regional Chamber of Commerce has written a letter of support. Later this week, the Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization and the Roanoke Valley-Allegany Regional Commission will consider resolutions of support. And next week, the city of Roanoke and Bonnetot County will consider resolutions of support. The city of Salem is also considering a letter or resolution of support for the project. There's no fiscal impact, as the smart-scale program provides 100% funding for selected projects, and staff recommends approval of the resolution. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Chairman Lakeley.
Mr. Norris.
Thank you. This is the great example of regional partnerships and relationships. In a span of four to five days, we contacted county administrator on Saturday morning when we talked Megan, Commonwealth Transportation, Delegate Alston, VDOT, reached out to the local governments to make them aware of this, and Vinton was the first one to adopt the resolution, calling us just before 6:00 on December the 6th, as we drove through the fog of that evening. I think Megan was worried about me driving through the fog and talking on the phone, which is kind of scary, if you know what I mean. But they said, what do we do? You passed the resolution. We haven't heard back from the member of the Commonwealth Transportation Board. They went ahead with the resolution and were the first ones to do so, adding to a long litany of firsts for Vinton that Mr. Peters always tells us about. But at the end of the day, we got a phone call moments later from the Transportation Representative, Dr. Ray Smoot. This passed 15 to 0 with one abstention. And I encourage you, if you haven't already, to listen to the remarks that we made, and then wait towards the end of the meeting, in the last seven minutes, to hear the Secretary of Transportation, the Commissioner Birch, and others speak of the support for this project. It was absolutely overwhelming. And I want to tell you, Megan, that it was teamwork that did this in more ways than one.
Yes, sir.
And it just goes to show you what we can do when we all work together. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any questions, Ms. Cronice?
I don't have any questions, but I'm so appreciative of this effort. Living in the western side of Roanoke County, we are impacted frequently with the impacts of the interstate construction, and it's been overcapacity for a really long time, so greatly appreciate this effort. Thank you, Megan.
Mr. Radford.
And Mr. Norris.
Mr. Radford.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion, but I want to make a real quick comment, and you can hear the compassion in Mr. Norris's voice. He is so excited that we can, we can get this funding approved. If we didn't have somebody like him on board pushing this, who knows what would have happened? So, I thank Mr. Norris for his enthusiasm, his passion. He really drives the bus for us in transportation.
No, I drive the train.
Okay.
Correct.
The train bus. Anyway, I'd like to...
One sort of minor point. On the resolution, under paragraph 2, we say that the clerk of the board will send a certified copy of this resolution to Dr. Ray Smoot, and I was wondering, should that be modified or amended, that we should send a copy of this resolution to all the members of the Commonwealth Transportation Board, including Ray Smoot? Is that... Phil, you know a little bit more about this.
Well, definitely Commonwealth Transportation Board.
Should it go to all the members and not just Dr. Smoot?
We'll have to search for those members, I would tell you.
Come on, including the secretary.
I would recommend that that be followed up first with the phone call from Richard and Dr. Smoot, to make sure that's in protocol.
That's the appropriate manner of doing it.
I don't know that we've done it before, but we certainly can consider it. I'd just like to weigh in with the doctor to get his endorsement of that protocol.
Mr. Radford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution requesting the Commonwealth Transportation Board fund a smart-scale application for Interstate 81 southbound widening between Exit 137 and Exit 128.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Ms. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Next item, item 2, is request to approve the strategic target outcome areas and to endorse the strategic planning work plan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I am here today to ask for your approval of the strategic target outcome areas and for your endorsement of the three-year work plan for Roanoke County. Just as a brief history, in May of this year, the board met for a two-day strategic planning retreat to discuss the current landscape of Roanoke and work together to envision the future for the county. Following these days, seven strategic outcome areas emerged. For each of these strategic outcome areas, the board also developed a vision statement which describes the outcomes of successfully accomplishing each of these target areas. Continuing the work of the board, staff met to discuss ways to implement the vision of the board. Staff worked throughout the summer and into this fall to create a detailed work plan for each of these target outcomes. This plan was shared with the board at a September work session. During that September work session, staff reviewed the three-year work plan and received feedback. Following the work session, revisions were made based on that feedback. As we look through the PowerPoint, the seven strategic target outcome areas are displayed on the board. We will go a little more into detail in the next few slides. Economic development. Roanoke County is open for business. We proactively work with prospects and partners to seek new business. Our prime locations assist in the expansion of existing businesses and the attraction of new industries. Our prime locations help to collaborate and foster connectivity to the world. We offer and continue to expand a skilled workforce to meet the changing needs of businesses and industries. Our county's strong financial stability enable us to partner with businesses to assist them in expansion or locating to Roanoke. Community development. Roanoke County is a well-planned and vibrant community. Our innovative strategies develop communities that offer housing and services to all of our citizens. We facilitate growth by reducing barriers to development and redevelopment, and by adhering to standards that protect our resources for future generations. We seek opportunities to responsibly develop our undeveloped land through zoning enhancements, reduced regulation, and infrastructure expansion. Outdoor recreation. Roanoke County is a scenic community in the Blue Ridge Mountains. It is a premier national destination for outdoor recreation. We have an accessible, connected system of local, regional, and national parks. Our innovative programs ensure that we meet the needs and the interests within the changing landscape of recreational trends and a desire for healthy lifestyles. We offer a robust community park system that provides a variety of amenities for all ages and all abilities. As we look at the education slide, you will note there is red font. This is to show the incorporated change based on the discussions had at the September work session. Education. Roanoke County schools are nationally recognized and accredited. We have an excellent and efficient school system that develops K through 12 education, preparing students to excel at the collegiate level and thrive in our local workforce. Roanoke County Economic Development and Roanoke County Public Schools will partner with local businesses and industries to train students, thus ensuring alignment with current and future workforce needs. Our educational facilities provide efficiently scaled, safe, and technologically advanced learning environments. We recognize that changes in demographics and other educational options require public education to adapt with innovative approaches. Housing. Roanoke County is a great place to live. We have well-planned, appropriately placed housing that meets the needs of our changing demographics. We have neighborhoods with a wide variety of densities, styles, amenities, and price points in order to provide diverse housing options for our growing workforce. We provide robust housing choices that meet the needs of our residents of all income levels, life stages, and abilities. Our denser neighborhoods are interconnected and are served by a wide variety of public and private conveniences that contribute to a high quality of life. Public safety. Roanoke County is a safe community. We recruit and we retain dedicated and compassionate public safety employees who are prepared to respond to a myriad of public safety issues that may arise. We support our local law enforcement professionals in their work to protect the lives and the properties of the citizens of Roanoke. And lastly, organizational effectiveness. Roanoke County is the employer of choice in the Roanoke region. We are financially strong, trusted by our citizens and regional partners, and innovative in our approach to our work as we continually evaluate our organizational structure, our staffing, and our programs. We are widely recognized across the region, state, and nationally for our business practices. Our citizens are well-informed and understand our decisions and the issues facing the county. As we look at our next steps, staff is working towards developing a system to track and to report the progress of these plans to the board. We plan to reevaluate this three-year work plan as necessary. At this time, staff recommends approval of the Roanoke County Strategic Target Outcome Areas and endorsement of the three-year work plan. I would be happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the board members? Mr. Radford.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Are you going to consider looking at laying this out in a linear format like a Gantt chart, so we can see the movement of all the parts and pieces? Have you thought about that?
We have had brief discussions on ways to track. At the moment, we have not settled on one particular outcome. Since there are so many areas that we are working through, we are going to work on something that's visually aesthetically pleasing, and that will track timing-wise. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Norris. Chair, comment. It would be... In industry, there is a morning report that you can click on, and it shows the updates as it moves through time, and it's nothing that we can change, just look at. So, you might consider putting something on the webpage that can be shared and be transparent, so not only we can check it, but, you know, citizens can check it too, to the extent it's something not confidential, of course, that we're negotiating. But that would be a modern way of doing that, and you can incorporate the Gantt charts or whatever you choose to do, or whatever software package, project management package, anything that you might want, but it would give you a high level by each category of what's going on through time. So, just a thought. Might be some software package you can purchase and do that with.
Yes, sir.
Good job. Thank you.
Just a quick note, Madeline, that this really, I think, encapsulated our discussions and our desires for going forward, so thank you for your work on this. Thank you. And all of staff. I know this was a huge effort. Thank you.
Mr. Peters, anything? Rereading this over the weekend, it truly is a lot of work. We had to go back and re... I had to go back and revisit what we did back in the spring and then what we had the work session in September. I guess the one aspect that jumped out at me is it looks like we're hiring, are going to be hiring an awful lot of consultants. And I guess that's the one aspect that worries me, is that what impact that has on the operational budget, because it seemed like in many of those categories, we're looking at hiring a consultant for... a consultant for a variety of these different initiatives. And I know we have a fairly... fairly narrow and tight staff. We don't have a lot of FTEs. So I don't know how we would accomplish all of these strategic goals. But at the same time, I guess I worry about hiring consultants. What's the old joke? You hire a consultant to come in with a briefcase and a watch, and the consultant tells you what time it is.
The only thing a consultant brings is a bill to the day.
In any event, with that, I would ask for a motion to approve the staff recommendation for this item.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yep.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you, Madeline. Item three is presentation of the year-end financial results for June 30, 2022. We have the acceptance of the audit report and allocation of year-end revenues. Jessica Beamer, the Assistant Director of Finance and Management Services. And I gather Mr. John Aldridge from Partner Brown Edwards. Floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the Board. I would first like to introduce John Aldridge, who is Partner at Brown Edwards &amp; Company. He's here to provide you with a brief update of our fiscal year 2022 external audit results.
Thank you, and thank you all for having us. In my 28-plus years with the firm, this is the shortest meeting I've ever got to come to because our office is right across the street now. So this is nice. So I could actually kind of dodge cars and walk across the road to come here today. But it's good to be in the neighborhood. As you know, each year, you all have to have an audit, and that is required by state code. And as part of that audit, this also includes the School Board and Economic Development Authority. This process begins all the way back in April, and we start planning it and meeting with your staff and start looking at things at that point in time. And it progresses all through the summer until finally, there's a meeting with the Audit Committee, and you go over the details of the audit, and that meeting's already taken place. And then finally, the last thing you do is put the bow on the audit, and that's what I'm here for today, to put the bow on it. So at the end, your audit was issued, and you got an unmodified opinion. Okay? That's the highest level of assurance we will put on a financial report. So it's a clean opinion. So you all got a clean opinion on the financial report. Everything was done and completed and signed off on December 1st. It's not due with the Commonwealth until December 15th. So you guys were two weeks ahead of time on that with the filing. And what I will mention to you, and you all know this, your finance department has worked very hard, okay? Oftentimes, short-staffed. And they were able to pull this together, provide us with a document to audit, and again, get this done on time. So I wanted to just make sure I commended them for that. Couple other things I will mention to you all. As part of the audit, we have to test compliance with federal money that comes through the county. You all had approximately $33 million of federal expenditures this year. Okay? We have to test a percentage of that. I'm pleased to let you know, in doing those tests with compliance of the federal rules, there were no findings at all. So no instances where federal dollars were spent inappropriately on the programs we looked at or things like that. So once again, you got an unmodified opinion on the federal expenditures. And then lastly, we have to look at the state compliance requirements. And anybody that's looked at the state code and state guide, its page is upon pages of things we have to look at in compliance. And again, there, I'm pleased to let you know, there were no findings at all as far as that goes. And then the last item I'll mention to you that I like to look at for governments is look at your fund balance, in particular in the general fund, because that's the operating fund of the county. And what I did was just kind of go back over the last 10 years and look at fund balance. And if you go through that exercise, what you will find is you all have been steady right at about 1 and 1/2 to 1.4 months of reserves sitting in unassigned fund balance. The reason I tell you that is you're just showing a model of consistency. Even though the economy might do this, you all have been steady. You've made the right choices when it comes to expenditures. When you needed to cut things back, you have. But again, it's very steady. As an auditor, we like to see that. You know, I don't like the fluctuations. So you guys have done a very good job of keeping things steady and keeping that fund balance where you have. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions about the process or anything y'all might have.
I guess I'd turn initially to our Audit Committee, Mr. Peters and Mr. North. Any questions?
No questions, but I think I'll speak for both of us that... and he said it, our finance department does a fabulous job, and this just shows us once again what the people we have in the third floor who take good care of us and keep us in line.
And they've been so kind to give us a little light reading.
That's right.
That's a good story, too. Just to ask one question, don't... without getting into specifics, we compare pretty strongly against anyone else in the state, or we're, you know, are we in the top 10%? Or can you even comment on that? I mean, I'm hearing good vibes here, and I'm assuming we're probably... we don't have this flexibility up and down compared to other localities in the Commonwealth county-wise.
Right.
Are we pretty strong up there?
You're very conservatively managed, I will tell you that.
I fear that.
I've got some clients where that number, where I told you your month's in fund balance of 1.4, they're considerably less than that. I've got other clients that are much higher. And there's really no magic number. What I will tell you is if you're a locality the size of Roanoke County, and you know you've got a diverse tax base, so it's not like all your tax revenue is coming in from one business. You know, if you were a small town, you had one factory, then you probably need two years of reserves sitting there in case they do layoffs or whatnot. But being your size and having all these different taxpayers and consistency, I think you all are doing a good job.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. With that, I would ask for a motion to accept the report and also to reallocate the funds.
Make a motion to approve.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Aldridge.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item four is a resolution directing the county attorney to file a petition for no special election upon the retirement of Stephen A. McGraw as the Roanoke County Circuit Court Clerk, and that Rhonda D. Purdue be vested with the powers and duties of such office for the remainder of the unexpired term of office. Mr. Lubick and Mr. McGraw.
May I ask you?
Absolutely.
You go first.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. First, it is my pleasure to recognize and welcome Mr. McGraw and Ms. Purdue, who are here with us today. And as you know, Mr. McGraw is a former member of this Board and a longtime servant to Roanoke County. He has served as the clerk of the Roanoke County Circuit Court for many years. Most recently, he was elected by the citizens of Roanoke County to serve as the clerk of court for a term commencing January 1st, 2016, and ending December of 2023. Mr. McGraw has recently submitted his notice to retire, effective on February 1st, 2023, and we congratulate him. Section 24.228.1B of the Code of Virginia provides that since this vacancy, which is occurring within the 12 months immediately preceding the end of Mr. McGraw's term, the governing body, the Board, may petition the Circuit Court to request that no special election be ordered, and the court, by code, will grant such a request. So it is proposed that the Board adopt a resolution directing the county attorney to file a petition requesting that no special election be ordered, and that pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Rhonda D. Purdue, the highest-ranking deputy officer for the clerk of court, be vested with the powers and perform all of the duties of this office for the remainder of the unexpired term. And therefore, the election to fill the vacancy would be held at the general election, which is... would be scheduled for November 7th of 2023. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions of Mr. Lubick, or should we allow Mr. McGraw to speak?
Definitely.
Risky.
Mr. McGraw, floor is yours.
Thank you.
And Ms. Purdue, do you want to come on up?
Yes, she does. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, staff, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'll stay within my three minutes. In May of 1985, at age 34, I was serving the first of two stents as chairman of this Board when we suddenly found ourselves without a county administrator. Fortunately, a year earlier, we had hired away from Montgomery County a young lawyer as our county attorney. So for the next six months, Paul Mahoney spent untold hours serving as both attorney and administrator for Roanoke County. From that time forward, Paul can do no wrong. In January of 1992, I became Roanoke County Circuit Court Clerk and soon realized that halfway through the budget year that I had inherited, it was short $60,000. I requested those funds from this Board. They were granted without contest, and that never happened again, I can assure you, over the next 31 years. In fact, we pride ourselves annually in producing more revenue than is required to operate our office. Then in September of 2005, we learned that an additional Circuit Court judge had been added to our 23rd Judicial Circuit and that we needed another deputy clerk in our office's criminal division. Once again, this Board granted us the additional position without hesitation, and for the past 17 years, we have had no further staff increases. Which brings us up to today, my retirement on February 1st, and my recommendation that this Board authorize the appointment of Chief Deputy Clerk Rhonda Purdue to finish out the final 11 months of this my fourth term of office. Rhonda has been employed in our office for 26 years, and most of our accomplishments, I can assure you, she was involved with, very instrumental in our office. There's no one better suited nor more qualified for this position than Rhonda Purdue.
Thank you for your kind words. Mr. McGraw said, "I've been with the county for 26 years, and I've enjoyed it from day one, and I look forward to finishing out in this capacity and looking forward to working with everyone." Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. McGraw or Ms. Purdue?
May I make a statement? Present the presentation to the chairman?
Do I have to put that on my economic development disclosure form?
No, sorry.
Thank you.
All right, ask Peter. Thank you.
I've worked with Steve, obviously, as he said, for many years. He was on the Board when I was hired as county attorney in 1984. And we went through some difficult issues with the county administrator vacancy. There happened to be a thing called the flood, if I recall, in November of 85 that was somewhat exciting. And I want to say that when I was county administrator, I was just scrambling, and we had some really good people in our fire and rescue department, really good volunteers. Steve came out. I remember, gee, Steve, you went to what, Walmart and bought a whole bunch of blankets on an emergency basis so that we had a lot of people who were in shelters. So Steve and I go back a long time. So I wish you well in your retirement. I've known Rhonda for many years in the clerk's office, always been very helpful. So thank you for your service. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution so that our county attorney can file the appropriate paperwork and make the judges happy?
Motion to approve, but I'd like to make just one quick comment, and that is, Steve, thank you for all your years of service. We genuinely appreciate all you've done for Roanoke County and have been faithful in that service, and Rhonda, welcome.
Just a comment as well. Thank you, Steve, for welcoming me on the Board five years ago and, you know, doing lunch one day downtown and visiting in your office. It's... the office over there is very well organized, and you'll be missed personally, but I believe they are well-oiled machines, so it'll go on without you. And best of wishes to a great retirement.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
The motion.
Left me hanging.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item E5, this is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors and Roanoke County School Board regarding joint capital funding. Mr. Lubick and Ms. Aldridge?
Thank you and good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. And as the Board is well aware, this memorandum of understanding was presented to the School Board at your recent meeting on December 7th, following the State of the County address. And the purpose of the memorandum of understanding was to update the policy for the financing of necessary county and school capital projects in a fiscally responsible manner and to thereby avoid unnecessary budgetary conflict. And for our public who will be viewing this for the first time, it would be helpful, I believe, to review some of the background as to how we got here. Between 1997 and 2001, the Board of Supervisors appropriated funds to the School Board for what was then Phase 1 of the School Capital Improvement Program totaling $47.7 million. Between 2001 and 2004, the Board of Supervisors funded Phase 2 of the School CIP at a total cost of $23 million. Because of this, the large capital amount of school capital needs, the county needs were largely put on hold. But in 2004, the county committed to build a much-needed public safety building to house police, fire, dispatch, and information technology services at a cost of $28 million. That brings us to 2005. In 2005, the county's budgetary funding for debt payments within the county's current taxing structure were depleted. However, many capital needs remained for both the schools and the general county government. Because the ability to fund the needed future capital projects was uncertain, the Board of Supervisors and the School Board worked together. They worked collaboratively on a long-range financial plan that would enable both Boards to plan and fund future capital needs. Accordingly, the Board of Supervisors adopted a policy which established a variety of reserve policies and funds and a combined debt payment reserve fund. And for today's purposes, I will highlight only that single fund, the Combined Debt Payment Reserve Fund. It is important to note that the policy pertaining to this Combined Debt Payment Reserve Fund included first, a contribution schedule that was used to fund debt service. The Boards each committed to annually adding an additional $300,000 to the fund. For example, in the 20... the 2005 to 2006 budget, the Boards jointly contributed an additional $600,000 to the fund. And 2006 to '07 budget, the Boards jointly contributed an additional $1,200,000 to the fund, et cetera. Additionally, the policy pertaining to this Combined Debt Payment Reserve Fund also set forth a borrowing schedule for the acquisition of new debt as these prior debts were paid off. After the first several years, a three-year cycle of borrowing was established, which authorized the acquisition of new debt in an amount not to exceed $10 million each year. For two consecutive years of each three-year cycle, the funds, $20 million, were devoted to school capital needs, and the third year, the funds, $10 million, were devoted to general county capital needs. This policy was updated in fiscal year 2021 and again in 2023 to increase the borrowing amount to $12 million and subsequently to $17 million. Further, incremental annual debt service contributions, as required, were included in the annual budgets for both Boards. As recently shared by a letter from the School Board on November 10th of 2022, the Board has designated three capital projects that merit timely attention. First, the construction of a new career and technology center, which we have been discussing extensively and refer to as a CTE facility. Second and third are the renovation of Glenn Cove and W. E. Kundrich Elementary Schools. These schools were built with an open concept design, and teachers have found it very challenging to teach the students effectively in such environments. The School Board has requested clarification from the Board of Supervisors regarding a timeframe in which all three of these projects can be completed. And as noted previously, the purpose of this memorandum, which is before you today, is to adopt some updates to the Board of Supervisors' Joint Capital Funding Plan. to adopt some updates to the Board of Supervisors' joint capital funding plan in order to provide additional funds to the school board, and to also reconfirm that while the Board of Supervisors will continue providing funds to the school board in a fiscally responsible manner, the school board must prioritize the timing of its capital projects, and going forward, will not ask the Board of Supervisors to deviate from responsible financial practices in order to address capital needs. So at this point in time, I will review seven provisions of the memorandum that update the combined debt payment reserve fund policy, which I have outlined moments ago. So first, out of the seven, the annual allowed borrowing amount is seventeen million dollars per year in fiscal years twenty twenty-four and fiscal year twenty twenty-six. This bond issuance may be banked, if so desired, and saved for a future year. However, in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, the schools would be authorized a one-time borrowing amount of up to eighty million dollars. Third, beginning in fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, an increase in the annual borrowing amount will be authorized up to twenty million dollars. Fourth, the school board agrees that it will continue to annually contribute one point eight million to the combined debt payment reserve fund once the two thousand and nine Virginia Public School Authority, or VPSA, bonds are paid off. Fifth, the Board of Supervisors agrees that it will continue to annually contribute one point two million dollars to the combined debt payment reserve fund once the two thousand and eight lease revenue bonds are paid off. Sixth, both boards will budget for and include in their annual budget an amount required to maintain the future capital projects fund, in other words, to hold a positive cash balance while planning for future debt service payments. This amount is estimated to be three hundred thousand dollars in fiscal years twenty-four, and five hundred and twenty-five hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-five, and thereafter, for each board. And then seventh, both boards confirm their commitment to continue the incremental increases into the future capital projects fund, even in future economic downturns. Now, there are several other provisions, and I will highlight several of these other provisions as well. The county will provide up to two million dollars from fiscal year twenty twenty-two year-run funds towards the elimination of the open classroom concept in Glen Cove and W. E. Cundrich Elementary Schools. Second, a bond for the proposed CTE facility will be issued and financed for up to thirty years with a traditional financing vehicle and bond structure, which would be determined in the future. Third, the school board would agree that it would diligently apply for all potential state and federal grants that may become available for school capital projects. Fourth, in the process of designing the proposed new CTE facility, the school board will retain an independent energy consultant to share recommendations on the benefits of incorporating solar energy technologies. And this is consistent with the recommendation of the CTE committee, which has recently completed its work and made recommendations to both boards. Additionally, the school board is encouraged to reevaluate the size and scope of the CTE facility to ensure it is meeting the needs of Roanoke area businesses. Next, the school board agrees that it would participate in a county-funded, county-managed demographic study to analyze a wide variety of demographic trends within the county to include future school enrollment projections. Data from this effort would be utilized in the planning of future capital projects for both boards. And lastly, I would emphasize that the final provision of the memorandum is that the timing and priority of the school board's capital projects would be left to the discretion of the school board, and the school board would agree to address such capital needs in accordance with this updated debt payment reserve fund policy. So it is proposed today that the board authorize Chairman Mahoney and Mr. Kaywood to sign this memorandum of understanding on behalf of the board, and it is hoped and desired that the school board would take a similar action at their future meetings. I would be happy to answer any questions, and if I cannot answer them, Ms. Owens is here, and I am sure that she can answer your questions.
Let me add to Mr. Lubek's presentation, because things have been moving over the past week. I've had the opportunity to have several conversations with Chairman of the School Board, David Linden, and Mr. Linden is in the audience this afternoon. Mr. Linden has indicated to me that the school board is not able to make any representations or presentations to us because they have not yet had a formal meeting, and they have not been able to discuss the proposed MOU in a regular school board meeting. I believe the school board is scheduled to meet Thursday?
Thursday.
David's nodding his head. But he did indicate to me that he had an opportunity to transmit the draft memorandum of understanding to the attorney for the school board, Stacy Haney, excellent attorney. And Mr. Linden has reported to me that she has recommended or suggested a minor modification or change to suggest to the board, if you look at the last page of the memorandum of understanding, and it is at page ninety-two of our agenda, it's at subsection, it's Roman numeral four, subsection F. This section talks about how the present Board of Supervisors cannot bind the actions of a future board, and the recommendation or suggestion from Mr. Linden and counsel for the school board is that sentence be expanded to also include the school board, so that a current or present Board of Supervisors or a current and present school board can't bind a future school board. And I think that, David, is that essentially what we spoke about earlier today? And so if the pleasure of the board, if you'd be comfortable with amending subsection F, and I'd ask Mr. Lubek to also handle that. Again, I think there's an opportunity that we may hear some additional recommendations or suggestions from the school board after their meeting this Thursday. But I would also suggest, unless the board has any additional questions, and Mr. Lubek, I would move the adoption of the resolution and authorizing Mr. Kaywood and I to execute this MOU and to forward it to the school boards.
Second motion, Mr. Chair.
Is it too late to ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, I cut you off. Go ahead.
It's okay. Just a quick question with the clarification of including the school board also, that the future boards cannot be bound to this agreement. But my question comes in with the ongoing escalation of amounts of debt that we are taking on and the plan for the repayment. Would that be in question if we made this amendment? That's my only question regarding the whole.
I do not believe that, Ms. Hooker, that the amounts would be compromised. Certainly, this is a document that expresses the intent of the boards as of today, and the amounts, we know what they are, and I believe that those amounts would not change. It's just simply a principle of law that this board or the school board cannot bind a future board's actions.
Okay, I understand.
Just to add a comment to that, Ms. Hooker, Mr. Chair, some of this language will be embedded in the Roanoke County financial policy in January sometime, whenever we have been that usually on a yearly basis. Is that correct, Ms. Owens? Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman, if I could offer just a brief comment following Supervisor Hooker's question, if I understood what she was asking, Peter could speak to this as well. While the MOU doesn't bind future boards, the issuance of debt does, because that's a contractual obligation when we issue debt.
Right.
Okay.
So future plans for debt that we might issue in the future wouldn't be binding, but the payments that we have to make on debt that we've issued in the past is binding on us as a county, because we pull down that note.
Thank you.
Well, again, I think this is our statement of intent, but I would pace into add that as the school board goes forward through twenty twenty-three, with whether it's design, whether it's build, whether it's a design-build, construction, whatever, at some point in time, maybe a year from now, the school board will confront having to deal with a bid price. And if things are great, and the bid price is such that it's less than what we estimated, I think that provides some flexibility for the schools to do some other capital projects. On the other hand, if the bid price is significantly higher than what we are estimating today, I think we get back together with the school board and try to figure out, how do we go forward? And so we're trying to give a statement of intent today, realizing that we may not know what the actual dollar amount is until maybe a year from now. I hope it could go quicker, but I think our experience in terms of major capital projects, it's going to be anywhere from ten months to twelve months as you go through this process, sorry, as the school board goes through the process. And we would hope that we'll have good news maybe a year from now, and it'll be less than what we have anticipated. Go ahead, second.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Mr. Peters.
So I will go on record. I shared my concerns about this last Wednesday, and for the record, I'll share them again. The first, as I expressed, I've been involved in grant processes before. My first concern with this is that we are allocating seventeen million in twenty twenty-four and eighty million in twenty twenty-five, totaling ninety-seven million, and the project's estimated to be ninety-three million. So I have a hard time understanding if we're going to allocate ninety-seven million and appropriate through debt funding, that then we turn around and ask the school board to apply for grants. It's been my experience that you have to be able to show a need. One of the things that I, I have a lot of questions about the MOU. One of the things that I had spoke about with a couple of my colleagues was, why do we not just amend the financial policy, and we can put the number wherever you want to put it, but we want to borrow forty million in twenty-four, twenty million, excuse me, forty million in twenty-four, forty million in twenty-five, totaling eighty million in debt servicing, allowing them the opportunity to show a need going forward with the grants that we are asking them to look at. We have already determined, it seems to me, and the information that I've received from the administration, that it doesn't look like the solar option is an option that is in our best interest, and our financial folks have analyzed it as well. I have a hard time with the section here. We're going to ask them to get an energy consultant, as Mr. North just commented, it will probably cost us a couple hundred thousand dollars to tell us probably what we've already found out. And the other part that I have with this is, and I've said this on Wednesday, is that nobody is more in support of CTE than I am. I've made that clear for over the last year and eighteen months. Even sat down with Mr. Linden and Mr. Greenway back in the spring, and caused a little bit of a firestorm there that I was trying to get a deal to work out. But I thought the purpose of this was to solidify the CTE, to take the recommendations of our CTE committee, and to move that forward in this agreement. I don't think we've adequately addressed the elementary schools, but also, I think the comment was made at our meeting last Wednesday, that we do need to understand our children, and we need our ADM in our schools, because it is going down. And as I shared with some of my colleagues earlier, we do live in a different world. And I'll go back fifty years, and Norfolk Southern were coming to town fifty years ago and added a thousand jobs. In most of those cases, the spouse was a homemaker, and they had two or three children, and they would have probably pumped two or three thousand kids into our schools. But that's not the case in twenty twenty-two. As I deal with people daily, people aren't having kids. They're wanting to travel, and they're wanting to go here and do this, and they're not having the children that our past generations have. So I do think we need to look at our school structure. I know Mr. Radford mentioned on Wednesday that there are some localities that are doing K through eight. And again, I don't have that answer. I don't think we have that answer. I don't think we truly know how to address the elementary schools. I think that we need to ask the school board to work in a holistic manner with us, because I think the demographics are going to change completely. I don't think, the comment was made Wednesday, that the school board is not in charge of economic development or economic growth, and that statement's absolutely true. But as Chairman Mahoney mentioned at the State of the County on Wednesday, we added five hundred and fifty jobs. Our unemployment number is under two percent, or close to it. Even if we were to bring a thousand more people to the valley, that doesn't guarantee they're going to have kids. So again, I think that we need to take a holistic look at this. I feel like that the MOU should address just the CTE, that all ten members of both boards agree this needs to be done. We don't want to jeopardize our ability to have grants. I think this does. And then we need to then move into a conversation to address the elementary schools a different way.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
I was just going to ask a quick question. Maybe Ms. Owens can respond to this. But doesn't MOU and setting forth funding for future projects, is that the same as allocation, and would it be seen that way in a grant process, to the best of your knowledge?
Let me just take a peek at how we have that worded in the MOU here.
And while you're looking at that, I guess my interpretation of this, and I have made a couple of other contacts, is that we don't have to actually physically allocate the money. That doesn't take place until which time we borrow the money. However, this does outline seventeen million, seventeen million in twenty-four, eighty million in twenty-five, which does make it available for projects.
So I'm just asking if that's the same thing, and would that have to be declared in a grant process?
So my understanding is, in the grant process, that what would be required is for the actual documentation and full explanation of the project itself. I think what we have in our financial policy, and what we've tried to just kind of reiterate here in the MOU, would just be changes that this board would be authorizing in terms of the amount of the borrowing that this board would authorize on an annual basis. So, for example, on page three of five of the MOU, in section three, where it has updates to the policy, we would essentially continue the allowance of the seventeen million in fiscal year twenty-four, which our current policy already outlines for the schools. Then we, in fiscal year twenty-five, would essentially just be authorizing an amount up to eighty million. So I think all we're doing there is continuing with that seventeen, and then authorizing an additional sixty-three million. In the MOU, we've documented that we understand that there are the needs of the CTE, as well as to elementary schools, with the thought being that if the schools did apply for and receive grants, that that would be great, and those would go towards the project, and just minimize the amount of the actual borrowing. So I think that all we were trying to do here was just really kind of expand upon what we have in the current policy and just update it, and then we would update the policy at a later time to, if this is approved, actually mirror that. Then we continue on to say that, beginning in fiscal year twenty-seven, so we just kind of continue and indicate that we would actually authorize and increase that amount from seventeen to twenty million.
So if I can just get a point of clarification. So I guess, what is the difference in if you're applying for an SRO grant, or an ambulance or fire truck? And a lot of those grants have in there, is there funding sources for whatever this is? Why would that be any different in this case? Because there is a funding source for this, and this MOU is getting ready to be approved. And this would also then be adopted into our financial policy.
Correct. So for this... So for this, is just the intent to, we haven't actually appropriated any of the funds. We would do that like during the budget process. We would appropriate the bond money each and every year. So we, I would look at this as, this is the plan for long-term and then each year it would be an appropriation. In the particular grant that you're referring to for the School Resource Officer, that one was an actual appropriation of funds. And so that's why we couldn't, on the county side, actually apply for the grant because the funds had already been appropriated.
But I can also address the grants for a new ambulance. The question's asked, is there, is there money been, it's been used allocated, but, you know, are there, is there a funding source available, you know? Because they're not going to give money to a fire rescue department that's sitting on a million dollars and they're asking for, you know, a $300,000 truck. They're going to go, well, you've got the money, why are you here? And I guess that's kind of saying cautious approach I'm trying to take to this is that, you know, I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. North, who has been pushing these grants and there may be some changes to the grants, depending on how the scoring comes out for all localities. I, I just do not want to put us in a position that we're, we're going to make this move and then we're going to be kicked away from one of these grants that, that I would like to see us not only give for CTE, but I'd like to see us be able to apply for the elementary schools and I don't want to do anything to jeopardize that.
Thank you. Mr. North.
Just a few comments, primarily on the theme of will us, when this MOU with 17 million and 80 million jeopardize the grants? And my personal opinion, based on everything I've read, and this is, by the way, a summary of competitive grant process for this bucket of grants we're going after, provided by Superintendent Nicely. I don't know if he typed this up or if it was something he got down in Richmond, but it was well summarized of the larger document that the legislature passed, which is a much larger document. I cannot see anything in here because this is taxpayers' muddies. And by the way, the $1.2 billion pot will be expanded to $2.5 billion if the General Assembly sees its way to pass it as a biennium amendment to the two-year budget. I can't see anything in here that says that it will be jeopardized or says if you've got the funds, don't apply for the grants. We qualify in Roanoke County based upon this information to a 20% grant. And it's based on school divisions with composite index value at or above .300 and below .400 or contained and locally designated with above-average physical stress. We score 70% in both those categories. Where this could get dicey is in the 11 questions that somebody came up with that says, oh, and by the way, you got to take this test and pass 11 questions, which is already getting conversations among many people in the Commonwealth. They don't really know that that's the right approach. But we're pressing forward with the grants, at least according to the folks over at the school boards, because this is not only going to be discussed then, as it was two weeks ago, it's going to be discussed among several representatives of the Commonwealth in this area. Bottom line is, this is a work in progress and they're going to have to review the scope and impact of all this from the people who apply for the grants. So no, this is not why I supported the MOU. Why I supported the MOU, and I think I can speak for a few others that perhaps feel the same way, is they get 17 million. That was my idea, that that 17, the schools have a choice. Use it for CTE or put it towards elementary schools. That was my idea of building the base to support the elementary schools. They get 20 million in '27, they'll have 37, they can start an elementary school if they wish to. And then, of course, 20 million in the future years will set up nicely to get the schools done sooner than later. But at the end of the day, this $80 million that we can afford today, based on all the analysis our staff's done, is simply saying to the schools, let's go after those grants because it's $20 million, it's not 2 million, it's a significant amount of money. And if that don't work, we got another card up our sleeves that we're going to work on. And I'm going to go to several representatives and discuss the fact that this, this is concerning the scorecard 11 questions. And be ready because this is CTE and it aligns with the governor's workforce development improvement efforts all over the Commonwealth and grant program. And if, if one delegate in this area can get 6 million for a history museum, my gosh, all we're asking for is 18 to 20 million dollars to be put in the biennium budget to help develop this region's workforce through these program offerings at the Roanoke County CTE schools. So I respectfully don't, I'm not worried about that. I can't find that any language that knocks out this grant consideration because we've ponyed up 80 million dollars so far, or if you want to say 97 million. But my interpretation is it's 80. It's not going to affect us because in here, it simply says in part two, grant awards shall be based on project cost. The project costs are about 90 right now, escalated to about 93, and they're still a million short because there wasn't any concern for curb and gutter, that you have to enter the complex over there once it's built, nor is there a stoplight. And so a million dollars is already, needs to be added to the 90.3 and escalated, which takes it to 94.1. And it says it's based on project costs, including planning, design, site acquisition, and construction, the school division's composite index, and the fiscal stress category is designated by the Virginia Local Government, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I don't see, this is a separate bucket of money and if it's different than what is applied for in other grants, so be it. I can't find anything that knocks it out. And if there is something and I missed it, then shame on me. But I've read this, these documents fairly carefully and I know that Dr. Nicely has done the same thing, or he wouldn't have gone to Richmond and spent six hours driving over there and back and the times to speak on behalf of Roanoke County and what we're planning on doing. So, and I applaud that effort and I hope that it will continue. And yes, the laws say the schools have to be the one to file for this, not Roanoke County government or administration. We will be glad to help in any way we can. So that's all I have to say on the subject and I respectfully will support the MOU. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So I guess, kind of, everything my concerns got reiterated there. Again, I don't want anybody to take away from this that I'm not supportive of this. That's not the purpose. I'm concerned that Mr. North just spoke that this is a work in progress. So we don't know where the plane's coming in for the landing, okay? So we don't know what the final request will be or what that final document will look for, will look like. We, we have been led to a belief over the last year that there was going to be 20% of this available. Now we find out that that's not the case. There's already been too many moving parts that has given me a time to say, let's pause for a minute, let's, let's let this thing land and know exactly how we need to play it out, meanwhile knowing that we're all committed to this. And then the other point that I brought up on Wednesday that Mr. North just reiterated was, let's say everything is perfect, we get the grants, they get 17 million and they get 20 million in '27, which elementary school can be done? I'm really not in a position that I want to pit the Catawba versus Benton districts against each other, again, because I don't think we've had a holistic look of how this needs to be played out, especially at the elementary level. So, anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Radford.
Yeah, thank you. Jason, I thank you for the information that you shared with us on the MOU. The one thing I want to tweak, and that is item, item D, that talks about the school board retaining an independent energy consultant. I see that a little different. I don't see it costing 100 or 200,000 for a staff person, those people you can hire as a consultant through the architectural firm and they can actually evaluate and make a recommendation. So my whole, my whole thought about D was going to be more cost-effective and not to hire somebody full-time. They can do, you know, what they want to do with it. They can, to me, I'm not reading that they have to do solar, but it's a recommendation to look at it and consider it because, you know, we might want to do the same thing with some of our architectural services when we do a library or we do a fire, a fire station. So I don't see that as, you know, a big expense.
Well, in all honesty, that's the least of my concerns with.
I got you.
When I look at the MOU.
I know. But I've tagged along with the solar energy. I just wanted to, you know, let you know, I thought it was a lower, low-hanging fruit to take into consideration.
Mr. Chairman, just to comment to Mr. Radford's comment, this, in the spirit of this agreement, this is what the Citizens Committee that worked for almost a year or more recommended be done. So I think that we're following the direction of our Citizens Committee when this was included. So for the record, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Clerk, I think we had a motion and a second. Am I correct?
You are correct.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify, that was, that does include change.
Please.
To the school board, correct?
Yes. Item Romanu for sub-grad.
Ms. Peters?
No.
Ms. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Noah?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item F1. F1 is first reading of an ordinance appropriating $61,460,835.43 from the Roanoke County Public Schools fiscal year 2021, 2022 year-end funds to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 Roanoke County Public Schools budget. Ms. Peterson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At the November 10th school board meeting, I presented the 2022 fiscal year audit comprehensive annual financial report and year-end carryover appropriation request. These were approved by the school board. By law, any year-end balances of the school division in the Commonwealth of Virginia does revert back to the government from which it came. The county's comprehensive financial policy allows the school board to reappropriate year-end funds upon approval by the Board of Supervisors. I am here on behalf of the school board to request complete reappropriation of $61,460,835.43 for all funds as shown in attachment A to your board report. This reappropriation request complies with both the county's comprehensive financial policy and the school board year-end carryover policy. I thank you for the opportunity to present the reappropriation request of the school board today and can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Ms. Peterson?
So year-end funders?
Ms. Peterson, for citizens watching at home, $61 million sounds like a lot. Could you kind of walk through, I mean, what I would call the, the real carryover is a much smaller number. And the larger number is really various grant funds, reserve funds, like health insurance fund, risk management fund, things like that, that both the county has and the school board has in terms of establishing some reserves for future eventualities. So if you kind of, for purposes of the citizens walking home, if they say, oh, gee, we have 61 million.
There's your elementary schools.
And that's not really the case. Can you kind of clarify that the real carryover is, what is it?
3.7.
3.7 million.
Yeah.
It's a much smaller amount. As part of the agreement, first, we have a $2 million emergency contingency in the general fund that is required to be carried over year after year. And so our total general fund carryover includes the 2 million contingency encumbrances, which are carryover purchase orders of $57,379.72. And then the remaining carryover, we have $827,205.51 that is allocated to major capital and the same amount is allocated to minor capital. So that makes a total amount of 3.7 million that was surplus in the general fund or operating fund that is allocated according to the, this year-end policy. The remaining funds are 57.7 million. These include our fleet fund, just under a million dollars, our instructional resources fund, which is money that we gave up for textbooks and online resources and other instructional resources. We have a technology replacement fund, just under a million. Our total grant fund is one of our largest. That's $10.2 million and these are federal grants and state grants that are set aside for a very specific purpose and cannot be used for anything else. Our nutrition fund has a excess balance of 7.3 million. In the Commonwealth of Virginia, the nutrition fund is required to retain all earnings and they may not share with the other funds and so we keep that separate. We have minor capital fund carryover of 5 million, major capital amounts of 10 million, total bond fund, including the Wingbird High Project of 11.8 million. Our health insurance fund is, we are self-insured, just like the county, and so we build up reserves to cover our claims that are paid out. The reserve balance in this is 6.4 million. We have a teen amount in dental insurance, just under a million in our risk management, which helps us cover workers' compensation claims, and our OPED trust fund to help with retiree and health insurance. So our total other funds are 57.7 million.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Peterson?
So like government, they always got little stashes everywhere.
That's right.
Just want to clarify.
Just being safe.
I would ask for a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance and to schedule a second reading for January 10, 2023. It's already next year.
Motion to approve.
Sorry.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan.
Let's see. Item F2, this is an ordinance amending Article II, definitions and use types, Article III, district regulations, and Article IV, use and design standards for the Roanoke County zoning ordinance regarding halfway houses. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Back in July, the board requested the Planning Commission to look at the regulations for halfway houses. And so staff has been working with the Planning Commission and are suggesting the proposed amendments. So three areas we'll go through. First one, definitions. If you remember, the issue of white pelican, one of the issues that we had dealt with, the current definition talks about accommodations, rehabilitation, counseling, and supervision. And all four had to be present to designate it as a halfway house. So we tweaked the definition and so now reads, "An establishment providing residential accommodations and supervision to persons suffering from alcohol or drug addiction or other similar disorders, or to persons re-entering society after being released from a correctional facility or other institution. This use may also provide rehabilitation, counseling, or other similar services to such persons." So kind of make it a little bit broader. Second item is, you know, we currently only allow halfway house in the AV district by special use permit and in the C2 district with special use permit. So what's being proposed is to allow it by right in the AV, our cultural village center district, the C1 and C2 zoning districts, which is the low-intensity and high-intensity commercial districts, and in the I1 and I2, the low-intensity and high-intensity industrial districts. It would be allowed in R1, R2, R3, and R4 as a special use permit. And then all of those are subject to use and design standards. So the use and design standards that we developed, the Planning Commission staff developed, there are two sets. There's general standards, which would apply to all zoning districts. And so there's two standards. One is a distance requirement that no halfway house shall be located within 500 feet of another halfway house. The second one's kind of taken from our short-term rental use and we added to it is that the applicant shall obtain a zoning permit prior to occupant, occupation of the halfway house. So it deals with that they have to provide all relevant parcel information, the applicant's name and address, contact of who you would contact for resolving complaints, the structural layout of each floor of the halfway house, but also a listing of how many residents there would be and also the number of staff members that would be in, in that facility. The second set of use and design standards are just applied to the AV district and all residential districts. And so there's a maximum number of people residing in the halfway house shall be five persons and that would include any overnight staff. The second standard is that the halfway house shall be located on a parcel of land that is five acres or greater in size. So for AV district, while it's allowed by right, it would have to be on a parcel that's five acres or greater. And the R1, R2, R3, and R4, it's a special use, but that parcel also has to be five acres in size and it has to go through the process to get a special use permit. So with that, I will take any questions that you may have. Oh, let me go back. Planning Commission did a whole public hearing last week. We did have one speaker, a gentleman, he ran a nonprofit and they're looking at, he was questioning the limitations in R1 and Ag districts. And their program is more of a broader And their program is more of a broader program. And so what we, we talked with the Planning Commission about is inviting him back to a future work session to talk about their program and how they do in their faith-based ministry to this program and then try to work on a solution for that. But the Planning Commission did recommend approval of these amendments. Now I'll take any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Thompson?
I'm happy to make a motion.
Well, let me, just say one thing. Philip, I want to thank staff and the Planning Commission for working through this. I think this is a good step. I think that in one respect, we have opened up opportunities to address this problem, the serious problem that affects all our citizens, and particularly in the commercial and industrial other areas. I think we placed some structure through the use and design standards. I see this as a positive step. I thank the board for initiating, helping to initiate this process. So with that, Ms. Hooker.
I make a motion for approval with the second reading for January 10 and 2023.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rafferty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Item G is appointments. Does any board member have an appointment that has not otherwise been given to the clerk? Item H is our consent agenda. We have seven items on our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the form or forms listed below. And if discussion is desired, that item can be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does any board member want to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I don't want to necessarily remove it, but I, I'd like to ask the board under item five, with respect to our calendar, any interest in moving, moving our meeting next November back a week or would you want to keep it as it is? My thought was, if we moved it back a week, since we only have one meeting in November and December, it gives a little more distance between the last meeting in October and the meeting in November. It also gives a little bit greater time for the Planning Commission and planning staff to transmit materials to us for our public hearing. The downside with that is the Virginia Association of Counties annual meeting would probably be the weekend before the Tuesday. And so I'm kind of wondering, is there any, is there any interest in altering that calendar? And if not, just keep it as, as it's shown on the agenda.
My only concern would be if we know VACO would be that following week, then you'd likely have to move it up to Wednesday as well.
Yes, sir.
And with the uncertainty.
I think that's fine.
Well, I'm looking at the, at the calendar and I think I'm having a hard time understanding. It's currently proposed for, for the 8th, which is the day after Election Day.
Yes.
And so you're proposing the 15th, the following Wednesday.
Yes.
That's right.
Assuming that the VACO annual conference, and I was hoping that several board members, if not all of us, could attend, because I think the VACO conference is a valuable initiative.
It's at the homestead.
It's that weekend, the 12th, 13th, and 14th, if I recall, best, best as I understand from what VACO does.
And you think it would be better to have the meeting after VACO?
On Wednesday.
Yes.
15th, is that right? It doesn't, yeah, that makes sense to me.
But as the clerk has pointed out, I think it would have to be Wednesday.
It would have to be the 15th because.
And the negative to that is, all our board, all our citizens are used to meeting, us meeting on Tuesdays.
Well, we'd still have to meet on a Wednesday because of Election Day, most likely.
That's true. I don't have a problem with that, Chair.
Yeah, I'm good with either date.
I'm indifferent.
I'm good with either date.
I'm good with the 15th, 8th, whatever.
If the board is comfortable with the 15th, could we amend that part and still adopt the consent agenda?
We would need to remove item five, wouldn't we? And vote on it separately?
We can do that.
Probably, yes.
So.
So if I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda items one, two, three, four, six, and seven.
Motion.
Second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rafferty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. And I would move approval of item H5 as amended so that instead of meeting in November, on November 8th, we met, we meet on November 15th.
I just, I'm just asking for clarification. We, we do have the dates for, for VACO next year?
No.
Oh, we don't?
I didn't think so.
Well, they're not going to be the 8th because of the election.
It's always that Thursday.
The reason I was asking, because Saturday. They're not going to happen over the election, it's going to be in the middle of the week. Well, I understand, but I'm saying Saturday, that Saturday of that following week, it'll be Veterans Day. So I didn't know if that would.
No.
Okay, I mean, I don't know.
It usually starts on Saturday, but for most people, it rivals Sunday.
Okay.
Warning for the Tuesday.
Usually, historically, VACO has met after the election, the weekend after the election.
I just saw the holiday there, so I know where he's next. So is there a motion for the 15th?
I made a motion.
Second.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rafferty?
For November 15th.
For November 15th.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item I is citizen comments and communications. I do not have any. All the citizen communications I have are for this evening. Madam Clerk, do you have any?
No, sir.
Item J, reports. I move that we receive and file the seven reports that are listed in our agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rafferty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item K is work sessions. Now we have a work session scheduled to discuss Department of Social Services staffing with the board. Susan Goad, the Director of Social Services, Rebecca Owens, and Mr. Elliott will be handling that. We will now recess and go up to the third floor for this work session and we will return at 7 o'clock for our evening session, public hearings.